Okay, well, I guess we will get started.
Did you answer the question?
Yeah, I said, "No, we're just getting started." Is that, didn't he respond at all?
No, I just, I did respond back. I guess, yeah. If you answered anything, then it's good.
How is the order?
Recording in progress.
Here, do you have a call?
Yes, here we have a call.
Well, what's... Ted, do you want to start us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Father, thank you for this day, and I thank you for the opportunity to meet together. And I pray that you have good disease, to your child, benefit. Just ask for your help. And you know that. Thank you for that. Okay, so, um, we need to, to, to vote on asking the... Oh, there's your point.
I'm buying it. Oh, Betty Patrani. Anyway, just please finish up with Piper. All the reports you're in. She deserves.
Day.
To be done.
Yes. Thank you. Um, okay, so, we need to vote on whether or not we vote... Ted, can you explain to us what we need to do?
Okay. I'll try to make it as long and short as I can. Uh, the hospital currently by law gets, because of the special district, receives three mils from property taxes. And what I would like to do, and what has happened in the past, is by law, we're allowed to receive three additional mils, making that a total, which is an option to the voters to support or not support, but to ask the voters for their support, uh, for additional, up to six mils. And, uh, it needs to be submitted to the commissioners so that it can be put onto the ballot. And, uh, and then, of course, the voters will decide whether they would choose to give us three additional.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes.
So are we asking, so you said there's three by default? And are we asking them to decide on an additional three or an additional six?
We are asking the voters to decide on an additional three for a total of six.
And so, sorry. Can they say, "We don't want to give you three, but we could give you two"?
No, that's not an option on the ballot.
And it's three or nothing?
Well, the way the ballot is worded is three or nothing.
Okay.
Where the issue is worded, uh, generally, uh, it's worded, "Shall the Weston County Hospital District continue the district's mil levy at the current six mils, which was increased from three mils in a special election in 2008 and continued to the general election in 2000, 2012, '16, and '20, and to continue to provide funding to support the Weston County Hospital, the Weston County Manor, and Weston County Home Health." That is the way it has been worded on the ballot before.
And this board can ask for up to three additional mils? And so whatever you request is what will go on the ballot?
And what we...
Thank you.
What we have, and just correct me if I'm wrong, but what we have right now, right now, the status quo is six. Is that correct?
Currently, we've been receiving apparently six mils since 2008.
So somebody should probably make a motion, and then we'll cut, and then we should discuss, if we have any more discussion.
Madam Chair, I move that we, uh, that we ask the commissioners to go ahead and place this issue on the ballot, asking for the three additional mils, up to a total of six mils, to be placed on the ballot.
Would you do that through approval of the resolution that's been presented?
Oh, we haven't. So that would be your motion to approve a resolution to be forwarded to the commissioners?
What it says in this wording, I'm just reading it. It says, "We're voting to call an election." Is that what we're doing?
That language is from the statute, so I matched it to what the statute said. You could read that if you prefer.
So maybe we should just read here what's...
Well, let's get a second, then we go into discussion.
And what? Yeah. I'll second your motion. So what is this called, what would be called?
So... Ted, is your motion to approve?
The resolution.
A resolution?
Resolution to present it.
Requesting a vote to call an election.
I, yeah, the commissioners will vote on it, is that what you're meaning?
No, my question is, is your motion to forward a resolution to the county commissioners requesting a vote to call an election upon the question of whether the mil levy should remain at the increased mil levy of six mils for the operation and maintenance of Weston County Health Services? Is that your motion?
Correct.
Then I say this.
I would like to read through this and maybe make some changes to the past resolution.
Is that my fault that I haven't seen that?
Denise sent it over this afternoon. It's the 2020 resolution that she pulled out. It's the 2021 that she was applying for 2020.
Sure, thank you.
Yet I may impart of the discussion, and of course, with the attorneys.
So the motion, you have a motion and second, so now we can discuss the resolution and fix it, or do whatever you want to it.
In the first whereas, uh, when the Weston...
Oh, wait, oh, yeah, yeah, sorry, sorry to interrupt you.
When the Weston County Hospital District has formed, the district's mil levy on taxable property within the district's boundary, rather than was, I put in through is, is three mils. So everybody understands that it has, it already has three mils, rather than was.
So the whereas says, "When the district was formed."
You're correct there, so maybe was is correct.
It was down here is where we start.
So let's read the whole thing and then see if we need to change that once we...
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Well, I was going to jump way down to the third whereas.
I'm on the second whereas, and I think the actual verb that we're trying to accomplish, if you will read the second whereas with me, it says, "The Wyoming statute that I believe is referenced here in our agenda says it authorizes a special hospital district to submit to the voters of the district the question." I believe the verb in our motion should be, "We move that we submit to the voters of the district the question as to whether they want to increase the mil levy up to six mils."
Or continue.
They're not continuing.
Because you're already at six, right?
Right, we're at six, but I think what we're actually doing, and it says, "Vote to call an election," is I think our motion is to actually take the action of submitting to the voters the question.
Is it to the voters or is it... Our action is to submit a resolution to the county commissioners requesting of the voters.
Well, that's not what it says here. It says in Wyoming statute thirty-five...
So it's a distinction without a difference? You're both saying the same thing?
Okay, are you sure that it's the same thing?
You are asking the commissioners to call an election upon this question.
Okay, great. Good.
Okay, I was jumping down to the third whereas, and maybe this is going to, because of the first whereas, whereas the voters in the Weston County Hospital District voted to increase the Weston County Hospital District's misspell, should be a mil rather than ill levy, from three mils to six mils.
Which one are you on, sorry?
The third whereas.
Oh, yeah.
From three mils to six mils at a special election held on... I crossed out "special election" held on May 6, 2008, and put in with the option of additional three mils with a total of six mils. But am I confusing it with that?
Yes, you are, because this is a timeline, so, yeah. So it started, the first whereas starts the district at three mils. Um, and then the statute says you have the option of increasing. The next thing, the next whereas is the next thing that happened on the timeline in 2008. And then the next whereas, the fourth one, is what happened next, where they added the additional three mils, where it's been from ever since. Does that make sense?
That does make sense. And also explains in that fourth one that it happens every four years.
Yep, and then we have to add in the fifth one, November 8, 2016, and November, whatever it is, 2020, right?
So are we asking that this is added to the general election held in November?
Correct. What is, what was election day 2020?
That's what I don't know.
So we need to know that one, or do we need to know the one that's the issue?
It says here that the general election is held on Tuesday, following first Monday in November.
Yeah, but I'm looking at the exact date in 2020.
I believe it was November 3rd.
You got it.
November 3rd.
So we have to add into the fifth one, if it says, so it will say, "Whereas the voters in the Weston County Hospital District voted to continue the district's mil levy at six mils at the general election held on November 6, 2012, November 8, 2016, and November 3, 2020, and."
I'm coming up with November 5. Because it says here that the general election, that's in 2020, I mean, for the election we're concerned about.
Oh, good, current, new...
This would be November 5, 2024.
You were way ahead of me. I actually got on that. I'm turning people over again.
So is that big, Jack?
I'm trying to verify it with the internet.
November 5, 2024.
Yeah, it looks like November 3 of 2020.
Okay, on the back page, uh, that first whereas, I don't see anything to change. And then now I'm at "therefore be resolved by the Board of Trustees, Weston County Hospital District." Okay, I was wanting to verify pretty much the last sentence in there. Of course, it's all one big sentence, last line, line and a half. So we need to be held on Tuesday, the next following the first Monday in November 2024.
Ted, I think this is what we really want to approve right here? Has everybody read this part?
Yeah, I agree with you, but we're going to send this entire resolution.
But it looks like right here, that the prior board was, this is where they were very specific about.
Yes.
Exactly, we are missing a space right here.
Yeah, between the west, the western.
But it says that here's the ballot proposition to be submitted to the voters, and then it gives exactly the language in quotes, you know, shall the, and you can read it for yourself. So I would think
That's the one I read out loud.
That's probably the pertinent language that we would...
That's the one I read.
My concern is, who is going to be responsible for submitting what message to, to the county commissioners? I think this is probably the message.
The whole resolution.
Right, the whole resolution, as long as it includes that. And, and it looks like, so who is it that will be responsible for actually making sure this happens?
Well, I was going to ask Kathy if she is available so that she can go ahead and, uh, meet the commissioners, and possibly, and I don't care if the entire board would like to show. Uh, it is an open meeting, I think if the whole board could go at that time, whenever it's scheduled, that's fine, and if only a member or two can go, uh, would be fine too.
So it looks like Connie signed this, and maybe the secretary signed this? So is that the action that we need to take?
Yes.
We need to take official action at this board to go ahead and present this.
No, this is their limits.
Well, but they signed it.
So this will get finalized by your vote to approve the resolution, and then you will have the president and the secretary sign the resolution and present it to the commissioners.
Okay, so who will be responsible to basically update this? Who's going to do that?
I think we're doing it right now.
I mean, who's actually going to type it out?
I believe.
It'll be Denise, and I can send it to you guys to look over if you would like to. Because I appreciate anyone checking my...
Well, no, that's fine. I'm just wanting to make sure that this doesn't fall through the merits. And so we'll vote to approve it, and then you'll update this document.
And give it to Kathy.
And then the appropriate people will sign it. And then who will deliver it to the county commissioners?
That's it.
Then Kathy will...
And I can go with her.
Great, sounds good.
The other correction, as you pointed out, if it be a further resolved by the Board of Trustees, needs to be a space between the... And then also included in the shall, Weston County is, uh, the current dates.
And we just need to update the dates?
Um, did you have a suggestion on, you had words that you thought you wanted to change?
Well, I was looking at, and you guys kind of corrected me, and because I was quickly going through here. I like to, in maybe this habit, uh, when we, the additional three mils that are requested, that we're requesting is called an optional mil. And that's the only real word. I always call them an optional.
Do you want to add that somewhere?
I, it makes no difference. Maybe that word's special to me, but not, nobody else.
So the place to put it seems to me like the continuation of the Weston County Hospital District's optional mil levy.
In the fourth?
Right there, and then now therefore be resolved.
Yeah.
That seems to me like
Now that...
Under the now therefore be resolved.
Except for that, it can't be because six is not optional.
The only thing I'm thinking here is if it's not broke, don't fix it.
I mean, I will agree with you. I will agree with you, like I said, that the wording "optional" was always something that I, but I agree, we went through this somewhat, and I, I will agree with it, optional is, don't fix it.
I have a suggestion, Ted, if you wanted to add it. What would you think about adding it after the, in the fourth whereas? Where it says, "Whereas in accordance with Wyoming statute section blah blah blah, continuation of the Weston County Hospital District's optional mil levy beyond three mils, or mil levy option?" I don't know. What do you think?
Was that word meaning thing to you as?
I kind of like having it there because it is an optional three mils. The first three mils is an optional. If we have a district, we have to have the three mils. So I like the idea of adding optional to it, because it just, to me, brings clarification.
That's what I thought it did, but I, I
But I don't know.
Like the word.
Like, I'm not sure where it, where it goes.
Allison, do you see a problem with the adding it there?
Uh, sorry, I was trying to... I don't see a problem with adding it there.
The new store. This is the one-stop shop. We have a pharmacy, we have a bootlegger's liquor, the deli, the food that you can get at a lunchtime is so amazing, the coffee shop. Certain Friday mornings, there's 30 people sitting here in all these chairs. This is the hub for people to come and visit, have their coffee, have their doughnuts. It's amazing what this area has done, totally amazing.
Uh, sorry, I was trying to... I don't see a problem with adding it there.
Is there, is there a better, is there a good idea to not have it? Is there a good...
Well, I think you have to add in language that says optional mil levy of three mils beyond the three mils. And so it just gets a little funky, which ends up confusing people sometimes.
Yeah, so maybe it's better to not have it.
Yeah, just, it worked last time, let's just do what we did last time.
Okay. I would run with that, I just...
It's a fair point. If it was different numbers, it would make it less.
Well, it is kind of confusing to, unless someone sits down and everybody understands what they're looking at. I, you know, that's what I would like to impress to the voters, this is not something new.
Right.
You know, it's something that they have allowed to take place since 2008.
And I really think the word "continue" communicates that to everyone. So it says, "Shall we keep doing what we've been doing for a long time?" Is basically what this says. And that's what we're asking. Shall we keep doing what we've been doing for years and years?
And do we need to add the 2020 to that?
Yes.
It's always in there.
Okay. So that would need to be updated 2020.
Correct, and then add 2020 here, 2012 and 2016 and 2020. Even though it's not proper grammar, but that's the right resolutions.
Whereas therefore is not proper grammar.
So are we, are we clear?
Ted, I cannot make this motion again, you know, but are we clear in what the thought is?
So what we're going to do is, we are taking this resolution, not obviously the call to order, but the resolution. We, as in Kathy and myself, take this resolution to the county commissioners and ask them to put on the ballot. When is the county commissioner meeting?
August 6th. Not Thursday, the morning.
Well, we for sure will be able to get on their agenda.
And we will have that call tomorrow.
We'll get on the agenda, we just don't know what time. They'll let you know on Friday usually.
They usually have, if nothing else, they usually have a opening for public, is this, public comments? Uh, public comments. If there's not a 15-minute gap to get in there, a person could put it into the public comment area, I would think.
Denise, did you call them already? You've mentioned calling.
No, I will first thing tomorrow.
Okay.
I do not see, well, I don't know what their agenda is. I do not see them probably getting on their agenda.
Nick has joined your meeting.
And Ted, are you for sure that this meeting of the county commissioners is the last opportunity?
Yes, I believe it is. I'm pretty sure.
Thank you for bringing this to our attention. That was a huge contribution.
You know, I, what I questioned in my mind, because it's been so many years since I was there, that was, is 60 days or 90 days did have to be presented? I would rather go to 90 than second guess myself and say it was 60.
Hi, Nick, we're glad you're on.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yep, we can hear you.
Okay, good, all right. Just wanted to see if it works, but I'm in the car, my wife's walking around pestering her, so.
Very good, thank you, Nick.
Okay, yep.
So when this document gets up here, then two people need to sign it?
Right.
And Denise will let them know to come and sign it?
Yeah.
Okay, good.
So Nick, you will need to sign the resolution before we take it to you. Anne and Nick need to sign it before it goes to the commissioners. Did you catch that, Nick?
I can come in, I could come in tomorrow morning and sign it.
I don't...
Does that work?
I'm, I don't think you, like, the meeting is on the 6th of August. So...
That's Tuesday, right?
Yeah, that's Tuesday. That's Tuesday. So tomorrow's Friday.
So we don't have tons of time.
So if he can come tomorrow. Yeah, that'd be good for you to come in tomorrow.
Okay.
Hopefully Denise will have it ready.
Well, whenever, I guess Denise, whenever you have it ready, just let me know, and then I'll come down and sign it. So I'll be available all day tomorrow, so.
Does this exist as an electronic document, or we have?
Well, no, I can one day on. Thank you.
I actually already have it in. So then I'll just take it from there.
Okay, great.
And part of the thanks for remembering to ask votes to my wife. Well, thank her for it. We turn, we discuss a lot of things like this around our house.
Okay.
Okay, so are we ready to vote? All those in favor of Ted's motion, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Thank you.
Okay, so, um, so apparently Denise, correct me if I'm wrong, so these next two just needed, um, is this just the time of year that we use, or?
Madam Chairman, if I may? Uh, because the issue of the mil levy had come up, it came to my attention that probably whoever had kept the historical calendar of when things needed to happen for meetings had not occurred, and so these are some housekeeping items that I just wanted to ensure the board completed timely. Usually it's done at the beginning-ish of the fiscal year, which occurred in July. So it's the last day of July.
Perfect. Thank you, Allison, for doing that.
Okay, so, um, so we need to vote to approve the regular, when the regular board meeting is. Would somebody like to do that?
Madam Chair, I move that we hold our, as a public meeting calendar, the hospital district shall meet on the 3rd Thursday of each month, starting at 5:30 PM, unless otherwise approved by the board.
I second that. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Correct.
Aye.
All those opposed, say? Okay, let's pass. So, and then it looks, we need a motion to, to approve that the first number of the bank is... Okay, let's pass. Um, so, and then it looks, we need a motion to, to approve that the First Northern Bank is the official depository for the Weston County Hospital District.
And Madam Chairman, if I may, they are an authorized depository with the state of Wyoming Treasury.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Yep. And Carrie, are you, have they helped us out with the loan for the vacuum machine? Um, as far as I can tell, a good relationship for us?
Yes, they're very, very helpful. They're very, very helpful at First Northern, and they've always been good to the hospital, and we appreciate being a part of the community and their community.
Madam Chair? I move to approve First Northern Bank of Wyoming as the official depository for the Weston County Hospital District.
Do we have a second? I'll second. Okay. Any more discussion? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, sing. So we have approved that First Northern Bank of Wyoming is our official depository. Oh, um, so on this one, I think that we just want to make sure that, um, that, um, that strategic impact, the interim human resources services was included on the rest of their contract. Does Kathy or Tony, either of you guys have stuff you want to talk about with that?
I can just jump in really quick. I, I, I believe it is covered in the contract, so I don't really feel like any further contractual action is necessary.
Okay. Allison, are you, are you happy with that?
The intent of having it come before the board is to be transparent with the public about, uh, what you're engaging strategic impact to do services-wise. So it's up to the board. I recommend it as best practice. Uh, the contract itself may not need amended, but the, uh, services, it would be helpful to expand it so that it's clear what services they're providing.
And, um, sorry for the pronoun error here, but I would agree with Allison. We have what we need in the contract, but just to be transparent.
Okay. Thank you, Kathy. So, so let's just talk about it. Um, do we have any, like, any questions or anything that we need to talk about? Other than saying that they will be helping us with the interim human resources, you know, resources as well?
So could, do we need a motion in order to discuss it? Or can Kathy just explain what the proposed services that strategic impact is going to provide to us?
If you wanted to formally follow Robert's rules, you'd make the motion first. But it's up to you.
I make a motion that we expand strategic impacts existing contract to include board governance, strategic planning and training, and interim human resources services.
I second.
Okay, so now Kathy, I think you can just tell us, tell us again what, what strategic impact is to be doing.
Uh, is there any help with our interim needs while we, while we, while we have a CHRO? As we talked about, we were, we felt like we needed to move forward with the change in the HR interim piece. And then secondly, Tony's been all along, been planning to help with governance and training there, as well as strategic planning that kind of goes along with that governance piece, so that we can all get on the same page with all these changes that have happened in the facility over the last bit. So really just exactly what it says in that document is what we're really looking for is going to be up with those things.
Kathy, you're, you're proposing that we replace, um, Karen as interim human resources officer with Tony? Um, so we're replacing H&amp;H with strategic impact? Is that the proposal?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
And then I just, Tony hasn't had a chance to tell you, but he's already entered, he had like 35 applicants for the CHRO, so I anticipate us being able to make a decision on that pretty quickly. But he'd be a good segue for us.
Um, Kathy, is there cost savings to the organization for the replacement?
Um, it's at the same rate that he's charging us, um, now. He will only work partial part of the week. So it will actually become a lower, it's a lower cost no matter what that H&amp;H was more expensive.
So...
So it is a reduction in it. I can't tell you the exact dollars right now.
So, um, how does that work with us having a contract with H&amp;H through the end of August?
The contract said that it would continue up to the time that the services were needed.
Okay.
Yeah, there's a, they basically, there's an L for that.
So there is...
Karen herself is a good, is a good gal, everything like that, but I think it just would do better in the long run for us to make this decision.
So you're saying it makes economic sense because we can get out of the other contract easily without any penalties and replace it with, um, the same services at a lower cost?
Correct.
Oh, I'm good with that.
I wish I could have said it better, but yes, that's what I'm saying.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So, um... And basically you, Kathy, will work on the timeline as far as that goes? Is that right?
Yes, I, yes, I will. Um, I'm not, I'm just advised not to come back to work till at least next week, but I will work on it.
Because I don't, I don't think we really want Karen not here while you're not here.
Yes, I hear you. That's okay. She's there this week.
Yeah.
And, um, yeah, well, I'm sorry, I have COVID, but...
We're starting to.
Yeah.
Take opportunity to get rested up.
Yeah, and, and I appreciate what Karen's done for the organization. She's been very helpful. It's, it's just we've got a lot of costs out there.
She's done a tremendous amount of work.
Yeah.
We have, we have a vote. Do we need a vote? Like, that's the next thing I'm gonna, and that's the next thing to do is vote, but if, if we don't need to change the contract.
We have a motion and a second on the floor though, so we have to...
Right, so, yeah, I get that, but, but that's, but that, but that's what I'm asked, like...
I think the vote makes it clear that you've authorized Kathy to take the steps to replace Karen as appropriate with strategic impact for the purposes of the HR role.
I agree.
Which may be important.
Very important.
Okay, very good. So all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, sing. That is passed.
Oh, yeah.
Um, it looks like your mind is working very hard.
Your mind is working very hard. Yes. Okay, so, so unless anybody else has, anyone has anything, um, it's time probably for us to go into executive session unless there's anything else we need to do here.
Need a motion and second.
Madam Chair, do you want me to stay in for?
I think you should, yeah.
Okay.
Someone admit, want to make a motion or do you want me to...
I move that we go into executive session.
I will second that.
Don't have to read them.
Yes, yes. I make, I move that we go into executive session under 16 dash four dash 401, subsection A, 3, on matters concerning litigation or proposed litigation, and 9, to consider or receive any information classified as confidential by law, including legal advice.
I will second that.
So just a quick, quick, she actually said 401, I think it's 405.
Did I say 401?
Yeah.
405, there we go. There we go. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, sing.
In addition to the weekly printed version of the newsletter journal, we also promote our community and share important information on our award-winning website, newslj.com, and in our weekly email newsletter, New Know. We also connect with readers through various social media platforms and invite you to check us out on Facebook, Twitter, and Instagram. You can even take a look at a recent meeting of the city council, school board, or county commission on our YouTube channel. We do hope that you will go to newslj.com and subscribe today, and we look forward to making all of our great content available to you. But regardless of your level of support, we thank you from the bottom of our hearts for doing your part to preserve a free and independent local press.